Welcome to the organizational meeting of the Board of Education. Would you please rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business tonight is the administering of the oaths of the newly elected board members Timothy Haran, Christopher McManus, and Judy Slack. I'll ask each of you to please read your oath aloud and then sign the document. I'll start with Mr. Haran.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
Mr. McManus?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
Mr. Slack?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and I'd like to remind each board member to please read and sign the school board ethics guidelines that I put on each of your seats. The next item on the agenda is the election of the president. Do I have a nomination for the office of the president? Barbara?
Christine Hayes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor to elect Christine Hayes as the board president?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight to nothing. So Christine, I'll ask you to please read the oath. You can take one.
Sure. (laughing). I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
The next item on the agenda is the election of the vice president. Do I have any nominations? Barbara?
Chris.
McManus, do I have a second? Gloria? Are there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Do we have another oath of office?
Let me read it again.
Oh.
Make sure. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of officers. And this includes the appointment of the district clerk, the district treasurer, the deputy treasurer, the tax collector, the claims auditor, appointment of attendance officers, and then oaths of office for superintendent treasurer, deputy treasurer, internal claims auditor, tax collector, and district clerk. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of officers? Gloria, second. Judy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. And now we have a variety of other appointments. And this is a five-page list, so I won't read the entire list.[322.83][322.83](laughing) You all have it available in front of you. May I have a motion to approve the other appointments? Barbara, second. Judy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Now we have a variety of designations. This is designation of the official newspapers, official bank depositories, official bank depository for tax collection, and designation of regular meetings. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the attachment regarding the regular meetings? Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Now we have some authorizations. Again, this is a lengthy list, so I won't go through them all, but you have them in front of you. May I have a motion to approve the authorizations? Judy, second. Gloria? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Now we have official undertakings. These are the official undertakings, the bonding of personnel. Personnel handling district funds will be bonded under a blanket policy unless noted otherwise. May I have a motion to approve the official undertakings? Judy, second. Gloria? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have some other items. Other items for approval. I guess I can read these. Approval of the rate of compensation to all non-represented district employees for internal district travel related to their responsibilities, conduct of meetings of the Board of Education, and re-adoption and continuation of all Board of Education policies. And there are several policies that also we have agreed that will be reviewed annually. May I have a motion to approve these other items? Teresa, second. Kathy? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we have something that might take a little bit more time, which is the designation of board committees and school building liaisons. Before we get moving on this, I'd just like to make the point, I think we regularly make it, that especially with regard to liaisons in schools, we like to encourage people to go to different schools that they don't necessarily have a close relationship with, just so that everybody can get to know different aspects of the district. So the first thing we can do is talk about school liaisons. Everybody's completed a survey, and the results are in front of us. So the first school is Altamont Elementary.
I think the suggestion is just to skip that one, because that's the only one that doesn't have a one, but I think if you did the rest of them, I think then that one comes to...
Okay, that makes sense. The next one is Gilderland Elementary. We had Seema and Tim put that as their first choice, and Barbara put it as her second choice.
No, we thought of Seema, and if Tim wants it as number one, then Seema would do Westmere as number two then.
Okay. Tim, is that okay, Gilderland Elementary?
Sure.
I need a lot of paper up here to write this down.
Usually you have an alternate.
That's fine, I can...
Usually you have an alternate at the elementary schools too.
Okay, thank you.
You want to put Seema down as alternate since she was one?
Kathy and Teresa put this as their number one option.
I don't know how I did that. I can't do Wednesday evenings. I don't know how I ended up putting myself down.
Okay.
Well, that's good, isn't it?
Kathy.
Kathy.
And then we will need an alternate.
Barbara said she'd be alternate, I think, on that one.
Barbara, is that okay?
Is that still good for you?
Pine Bush. Judy is the only number one on here. Judy, is that okay?
Sure.
And we will need an alternate for this one as well. Any volunteers?
I could be an alternate.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. Westmere, because this is where we said we'd put Seema.
Seema.
Do we have any volunteers to go as alternate Thursday evening 6:00 P.M.?
Kathy had said she'd do it. I don't know, are you alternate someplace else?
No.
Is that okay, Kathy?
Okay.
Westmere?
Westmere.
Farnsworth Middle School.
We had Gloria, Teresa, and second, Gloria, do you want to take it?
Mm-hmm.
Gloria, would you mind doing the high school and I'll do the middle school, and we'll do alternate for each other? I just can't do Wednesday evenings, and Gilderland High School's another Wednesday evening.
Okay.[695.04][695.04](laughing).
Don't mind.
Okay, so I'm going to do the, let's see, high school?
Wednesdays at 7:00 P.M.
That's fine.
Teresa will be your backup for that, Teresa, is that okay?
I can make arrangements if necessary, it's just I can't do it regularly.
Okay.
And then you're going to do Farnsworth? I'll do Farnsworth.
Yeah.
And I'll be your backup. Okay. Do we just have one of those? We usually have two at each of the high school and the Farnsworth and the middle school.
Yep. I think last year, though, it looks like we just had an alternate, and that was...
We did, and it seemed to work fine. We always covered it. You and I, we were alternates, it didn't work. And that worked for you too? Yeah. Teresa and I did it last year, it worked fine.
Okay, all right, so we'll stick with that then. The PTA, special education one, the one that's new in 2017, eight...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Got a couple of number ones for this, Barbara and Chris. And both of you do not...
Have a school yet.
Have a school yet. So do you want to do it together, or one, the main, and one alternate?
Is there going to be someone for Altamont?
Not yet.
Because I figured whoever is not this, then they would do the Altamont, I guess.
So what would you prefer?
I would prefer to make Barb happy.
Barb, do you want to do special and PTA?
Sure.
Chris, you'll be the alternate for that?
Sure.
And Chris, you'll do Altamont?
Sure.
And we just need an alternate for Altamont.
Do that, I don't think I have an alternate for that.
Okay. All right, so I'll go through and read the designations one more time to make sure.
Just one second. Gloria is an alternate for two, so Tim, do you want to do one of the ones that Gloria or...
Sure.
You want to... You can have Pine Bush or Farnsworth.
Pine Bush and Farnsworth.
Oh, I'll take Pine Bush.
Okay. Okay, so we have Altamont, Chris is the appointed liaison with Judy as the alternate. Gilderland Elementary, we have Tim as the appointed liaison with Seema as the alternate. Lynn Wood, Kathy as the liaison with Barb as the alternate. Pine Bush, Judy as the liaison and Tim as the alternate. Westmere, Seema as liaison and Kathy as alternate. Farnsworth Middle School, Teresa as appointed liaison and Gloria as alternate. The high school, Gloria as the liaison and Teresa as the alternate. And the PTA, special education, Barbara as the appointed liaison and Chris as the alternate. Does that sound correct?
It's a fucking block of paper scissors. No, joke, joke.
And now we move on to the committee survey form. The first item on this list is the NISBA voting delegates. So for the appointed representative this year, will that be Judy Slack?
I can't, I thought maybe Barb, you might want to do it with that resolution. You might want to be there to present that as the...
That's a good idea.
Official delegate.
Are you planning to go again?
Yeah, I'm going to go.
Oh, yeah, then why don't you plan on doing that? Because it just seems to make sense to me to have you do that.
And the appointed alternate, Judy?
Okay, that'll be fine.
You know, they may not accept it.
Right. Yeah, I know, but it just, at this point, it makes sense to me.
You could still be the delegate.
Good idea, Judy. The Capital District School Boards Association, we have three people who put this down as a preference for the alternate position.
I'll do that, I'm the secretary of that organization anyway, so...
So you're going to be there.
Yeah.[943.32][943.32](laughing).
Okay, and we had Barbara and Kathy put it down as the alternate. Kathy, do you want to do this? Policy committee, we had Barbara and Tim put it down as their number one option, and we had Seema, Teresa, and Kathy put it down as their number two option. I believe we could take four board members on this. So Seema, Teresa, or Kathy, for one that does not want to do this.
Well, I think the question, though, is who's going to be doing audit, because no one picked that as one or two, so that's the more difficult one, so I think that you should...
Want to start on audit?
Well, I just... No one picked it as one or two. (laughing). So all who's there are on it? No, no. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, there's only four members there, so they get... Well, Judy was smart, she didn't even pick a one, so that's what I'm going to do next year.
No, I did, I...[1002.73][1002.73](laughing). You're the four, you're it.
Neil, how many do we take? Three board members? Okay.
Only three? Well, there you got three.
So that would be... That would be Teresa, Tim, and Chris.
Chris.
Is there any objection to that?
Besides Chris.
Yes, Seema is not here, so... Somebody objects to that, we can put Seema on. I don't mind doing it again. Okay.
The only thing I would say is next year, we should do one, two, and three for the four main committees.
Okay, because I did the, I guess I did the voting delegate...
Right, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying.
That's what one does, because, you know, like, two people put three for the NISBA piece, so therefore you don't have to put three, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we didn't know.
No, you were smart, I'm just...
Well, no, no, you don't know what they're filling out, you just put what you think. I didn't know Barbara and Judy did that.
No, I'm just saying for, we really should do maybe like two things, which is the four main committees, and then do one, two, three for those four main committees, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think people use their one... And leave the other ones out until we do them separately. Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because some people use their one through three, you know?
Well, you know, Chris, if you don't want to do audit, Seema's there, we put Seema can, she was an alternate, so...
Okay, so we have a volunteer in Teresa.
You have a volunteer.
Tim, do you want to go on this committee?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay.
Excellent.
Chris?
Sure.
Are you sure?
Oh.
We've got Seema, and I don't mind doing it if you don't want to.
But you... I don't want to do that to Seema, she'll never tell me.[1095.12][1095.12](laughing). I already kicked her off the PTA one, I don't want to do two things. All right, I'll do it for Seema, just make sure she holds it.
I'll do it for her.
She watches this, she'll know.
Yeah.
Okay, now we can move back up to policy. We have Barbara and Tim put it down as their first choice, so Barbara, I'll put you on there. Tim, we usually do two committees, so, policy, okay.
Barbara's tough, you've got to watch out.
(laughing).
She has meetings all the time.
That's a hard-working committee, too, that meets very frequently.
Very.
Many hours.
You still want to do it?
Many hours.
Yeah, I'm in.
Okay, and now we've got Seema, Teresa, and Kathy. So we'll need two volunteers, or one volunteer to move away from that.
Well, that one, we had four.
Yep, so we can take two of the last three, Seema, Teresa, or Kathy. Is there anybody that wants to walk away? Kathy, do you want to be on here?
I don't have to be, I mean, I also put business practices down, it's my first choice, so, I mean, if Seema and Teresa really want to be on it, I don't mind, because they would...
Teresa, do you want to stay on here, or do you want to do something else?
Well, Teresa should... Teresa should be, everyone should be able to get their number one choice.
Teresa put it as number two.
Right, so then Teresa, if she wants, unless she wants to change her mind, should be on business practices then. Like, everyone should get their number one, so she's already in audit.
No, and she's already on audit, okay, so Teresa, we'll put you on business practices.
Not to talk for you, but...
No, that's fine, no, I think that's fine.
So then Seema and Kathy are on policy.
I'll be on policy and I'll be on business practices.
Well, you could do two, you may get business practices too.
Okay, communications, Chris, Seema, and Gloria put it as their number one, and we take four on this committee?
Mm-hmm.
Judy put it as number two.
Yeah, I'd like, because the only other thing I have is the NISBA's top choice.
We'll put Chris, Seema, Gloria, and Judy.
Same gang.
Okay.
Gang of four.
Business practices, we put Teresa on there. If you don't mind, I'm going to put myself on there since I'm not on. What else?
Kathy. If you want to be on policy, Kathy seems willing to give it up.
No, that's okay, I haven't been on business practices, so... And we can take one more.
And then there would be Seema, right? Everyone gets two, so it would be Teresa, Kathy, Christine, and...
Seema is on policy, and she's also on communications, and she dodged a bullet with all...
I could do business practice, I need one more, so that's...
Okay. Gloria?
That's it, of course.
But I'm only on one committee, so... But I have the caps, so...
I'm willing to give up audit just for you if you want.
Judy, would you like to go on audit?
I would have on one year, it was a struggle.
Kathy. Okay, so business practices, we have down Teresa, Christine, Kathy, and Gloria. And the CPSE and CSE liaison has been Barbara for the last two years, or sorry, it was Barbara last year, and Barbara's the only one that expressed an interest this year, so I'll put you down. And the NISBA advocacy liaison, nobody put their name by this.
Well, they started it two years ago, and I've been doing it for the last two years.
You want to continue?
All I'm doing is passing information on, I don't mind.
Yeah, but you could, yeah, you do it.
I don't mind doing it unless somebody else wants to do it. That's all I'm doing, really, passing on information to everyone.
Is there anybody else that's interested in taking on that role, or Gloria?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, and I'll read them off again. So we have the NISBA voting delegates, appointed rep Barbara, alternate Judy. The Capital District School Boards Association, appointed rep Judy, alternate Kathy. Policy review committee, Barbara, Tim, Seema, and Kathy. Communications committee, Chris, Seema, Gloria, and Judy. Audit committee, Teresa, Tim, and Chris. Business practices, Teresa, Christine, Kathy, Gloria. The CPSE and CSE liaison is Barbara, and the NISBA advocacy liaison is Gloria. Is that correct? Okay.
Action, action. I want to...
Now, according to our new handbook guidelines, these are, these committees are standard, standard, I forget what we call them in the handbook, and you need to designate someone as temporary chair to call the committee together, and then they'll elect their chair.
Okay, so do we need...
I read those.
Do we need a motion to do that, or...
It's part of our handbook, I mean, we accepted the handbook.
Okay.
Not yet, but we will, so it should be...
Okay, so we need a nomination for temporary chair?
No, you can appoint somebody from each of the committees to just call the meeting.
Policy review committee, temporary chair, um...
Hmm, who should it be? Guess who?
Barb, would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Communications committee, um, let's see, Gloria is outgoing, do you want to...
Gloria should be the chairman of that, she makes very good reports to the board.
Gloria, okay, temporary chair, Gloria.
Temporary.[1460.12][1460.12](laughing).
You can cross that temporary how?
I can cross it out on both of them. Audit committee, temporary chair. Chris.
I think Chris should be good.
Chris, okay.
The only committee that won't meet this year.
And business practices, temporary chair, again, Gloria is the outgoing chair, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I can call it.
Okay. Okay, I think we're in good shape then.
Uh, will you, yes, you can do a motion, yes, Commander Kay.
Now, can I have a motion to approve the school liaison survey form as completed and the committee survey form as we just completed? Judy, second. Gloria? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Thank you. Now we move on to the regular portion of our meeting, and the first item on the agenda is public comment, in which we have several people signed up, the first of which is Jennifer Romano. And I, just before we get started, want to let everybody know that our policy allows comment for three to five minutes, so please keep your comments within that timeframe, and if you start to go over, I'll just give you a little wave. Okay, thank you.
I'm prepared, Jennifer's prepared. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Romano. I'm representing a growing group of residents who wish to voice their general safety and security concerns at Westmere Elementary. After my first grader experienced a violent attack of a sexual nature by a classmate during recess, we began learning of many incidents of harassment and bullying, as well as injuries taking place at school. My child was attacked and harassed in an open, highly visible field during recess for several minutes. It was witnessed by at least one known child, however, no adult supervising recess observed any part of the incident. Our last meeting with Doctors Wild, Singleton, and Beany was very helpful. Administration was receptive to our concerns, and we informed them that the district would be hearing more about these concerns soon. We've collected over 175 signatures from district residents to petition the school board to implement a new play yard safety and supervision plan, as well as add additional outdoor security cameras at Westmere. Tonight, we wish to briefly present our concerns, express our commitment to helping the district work towards a resolution, and offer the district many free-to-low-cost solutions addressing many of our safety issues. Our concerns focus on three areas: safety, security, and commitment and collaboration from stakeholders. If you would please turn to photo number one in your pocket. Accidents and injuries happen at school, we accept and agree with that statement 100%. It's estimated that in the U.S., 200,000 playground injuries requiring emergency department visits occur each year. However, what we found alarming is that 40% of those incidents are attributable to lack of supervision. Our district needs to adopt a more formal approach to recess supervision. If recess supervisors are clustered together with their backs to the children and engaged in conversation, they are distracted. They may not notice a child wandering into the adjacent woods or parking lots. They may not see a stranger approaching the play yard. They may not notice younger children using age-inappropriate equipment, or the misuse of play equipment in general. If supervisors stay gathered in one area, they are not maximizing supervision among the unique play zones within the vast play yard. We've included a detailed peaceful playground supervision approach and a playground safety guideline with no real cost to implement. It's a solution to mitigate injuries and incidents of harassment, bullying, and violence that are happening on our playgrounds. Less injuries also equates to less potential lawsuits. It's a plan that just makes sense. Play yard supervision can be broken down into zones that make sense for our school. These zones will maximize supervision and limit distractions and diffusion of responsibility among supervisors. We have a tentative zone approach illustrated in the folder on photo number two. We are happy to meet and discuss how the peaceful playgrounds approach can be implemented at Westmere and other district schools. If it is determined current staff is not capable of providing adequate supervision with the new safety model, then we must assess a need for paid monitors and parental volunteers. We also need additional surveillance cameras at Westmere. Our school has a total of three outdoor cameras covering the front entrance doors, the front parking lot, and the rear center of the school. If you turn your attention to photo number three, it indicates where those three cameras are and their vast area that is not covered currently by surveillance. In general, our school grounds are lacking surveillance warning signs. Signs should be prominently displayed throughout school grounds. The first thing visitors should see when they enter upon Westmere from Johnston Road is the surveillance sign and a camera collecting identifying personal and vehicle data. No cameras currently exist on either side of the school to view adjacent parking lots. There's only one camera on the entire backside of the building where our children play, and from photo number 3.5, you can clearly see that that camera's field of vision is partially blocked by a tree. Cameras should be IP or Internet protocol-based, much like the ones you have here, that can have live feeds sent and be... that can have live feeds sent and be directly monitored by local police department. Our district, I believe, has a sixty thousand dollar Smart Schools Fund, which is intended in part to accomplish this very goal. But where is the district in the implementation of the Smart Schools project? How much of the funds will be allocated to our elementary schools? Technology that can reduce emergency responder times will be invaluable to saving lives in a crisis. In photo number four, we see the construction site of the new luxury apartments that will be built all along Westmere's wooded trail area, a place where our children frequently exercise. What security measures are planned on the developer's end to keep our school safer? Overall, there should be no blind spots anywhere on school grounds, especially where children are playing outside or entering or leaving the building. Keeping our school safer is something we can all agree on. We have a tremendous opportunity to pull expertise from all stakeholders in our community to protect the physical and emotional well-being of our children. We have building cabinet experts, a PTA committee that is a well-oiled fundraising networking machine, a district-wide security committee that works with local emergency responders, and committees that focus on anti-bullying, anti-harassment, and diversity education. Do we really need yet another committee for parents to be able to participate on safety and security issues? Or can we all recognize that school safety truly takes a village, and everyone in this room across our community has a role to play? We're asking for your collective expertise. Everyone at this table knows how to get things done in the public school sector. How can we continue to make our schools safer in a proactive way rather than a reactive one? Here is a copy of the written statement, which includes further details omitted for sake of time, as well as the original petition signed by over one hundred and seventy-five residents. Thank you for the opportunity to represent the district residents who signed our petition, and we look forward to working together toward mutual goals.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tima Ickball.
Hi, my name's Tima Ickball, and I'm a rising senior. And I came here to speak today about the immediate termination of the class rank. It may seem like a small number, but its effect is unquantifiable. Teenagers today already feel too much pressure of not being good enough. They have to be the perfect student, a star athlete, and the president of every club. Doing just well never seems to satisfy anyone. After all that, the hard work consisting years of blood, sweat, and tears gets compressed into a single number to determine whether they're better than their fellow classmates. Given all the things that students have to worry about, why add another one to the list? Especially if that headache is the peers. School is, becomes a battleground where everyone is the enemy. Ranks don't just make students competitive, it makes them toxic. A good grade may exhibit competency, but paired with a not-so-great rank only hurts the student in the college process. But more importantly, it hurts the student's confidence and their self-worth. Top students feel cheated by their rank because it seems to favor those with the highest grades without taking into account the rigorous classes they have put a lot of time into. While struggling students have another reminder that exhibits the school's lack of care in favoring their growth and their journey in learning. I can say from experience that this number creates fear, anger, division, and most importantly, self resentment within the student body. This environment is not what school should be. It's not what learning should be. Gilderland should promote collaboration and an exchange of ideas. The college admissions process is already there to scrutinize every aspect of harmony of the, of the student and, and, uh, and we cannot add another number that only serves to harm the psyche of the student and the harmony of the student body. Over half the schools in the United States have already ditched this archaic number. We must be the next. We must do this immediately so we don't affect another four hundred students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have one more person signed up. Teresa, would you come to the microphone and say your name?
Hi, I'm Teresa Calathell, and I'm a student here at Gilderland High School. As a rising senior, I'm about to begin the process of college applications. This critical period of my educational career is not just one of hopeful speculation for my adult life, but also one of retrospection as I begin to look back on my years in high school. After taking inventory of these memories, I can truly say that Gilderland High School has provided me with a profoundly formative experience. Much of my academic and personal growth can be attributed to the remarkable faculty, dedicated student body, and challenging coursework found here at Gilderland. There are many measures used in college applications that I believe reflect such growth honestly, such as GPA, teacher recommendations, and essays. However, I feel like class rank does not hold the same integrity as the rest. In fact, I believe that class rank exacerbates a negative tradition of competition among students, and not only promotes such behavior in high school, but perpetuates the mentality through college and into adulthood. This is why I believe class rank should be eliminated for the class of twenty eighteen. In my past three years in Gilderland, I have felt an intangible and yet all-too-significant atmosphere of hostility among my own peer circles, as we vied for one of those few coveted spots in the top one percent of the class. Many of us would constantly thirst to know our standing in comparison to other students on tests and quizzes, so much so that if one of us confided in a friend and told them our test grade, somehow news would spread to many other curious students. Our very own mentalities were negatively contorted to believe that success cannot be shared between like-minded and hard-working peers, but can rather only be monopolized by one person of negligibly greater quantitative worth. The stratification among the student body promoted by class rank only serves to necessitate such an unhealthy habit. The distinctions between number one and number two, or even number one and number twenty vary by such marginal points due to the consistently superior grades found among such a sweeping percentage of the student body. And yet, every student below number one is left with the feeling that he or she is inferior. The students of the class of twenty eighteen are ultimately far more than what their GPAs represent. Humans are naturally multifaceted and complex, and hold a potential for success and societal impact that can never be reduced down to a string of cold and distant statistics on a sheet of paper. How unfortunate is it, then, that a college would forego all of these remarkable qualities of a student after recognizing that he or she is not within a certain GPA bracket? What loss it would be for, what a loss it would be for both the college, who loses the chance of receiving qualitatively exceptional students, and the students who are denied scholarship opportunities or even admission because of their rank. Gilderland has already successfully bred the best and the brightest. Eliminating class rank for the class of twenty eighteen will simply allow the students to believe it too.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the June thirteenth meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second. Kathy? Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Marie?
We have a couple of those new faces in the audience that I'd like to embarrass a little bit. Could our, I can't, I don't know if there's two of you here. Can you stand up and introduce yourselves to the board? Sure, Michael, start, and Jennifer.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome, yeah. Thank you for coming. Next, we will move on to information items, curriculum and instruction information. Damian?
Thank you, Christine. I'd like to start by sharing with you the Farnsworth Middle School Learning Center Annual Report. This was prepared by Maura Nichols and Lisa Lehman, the two middle school librarians. And I do want to draw your attention to the headline story, "The Launch of the Student Help Desk at Farnsworth Middle School", which we're very excited about. Uh, next, also from Farnsworth Middle School, we want to extend congratulations to eighth grader Anish Mupidi. Anish finished in, finished in ninth place at the National History Day Competition last week held at the University of Maryland. In addition to his ninth-place finish, Anisa and his documentary, Joseph Rottblatt and the Anti-Nuclear Stand, also received two additional awards: Best Junior Project from New York State and the Global Peace Prize awarded by the United States Institute of Peace. This documentary can be viewed by going to the link that is provided for you. And I should point out that this was actually not last week, it was several weeks ago, but, um...
Still impressive.
Still impressive, nonetheless, for sure. Also included with your information is the two thousand fifteen sixteen New York State School Report Card. Of course, there is a lag of a year typically when the report cards are released. Uh, this is a fairly comprehensive report, so if at any point you have any questions that you'd like to run by me, please don't hesitate to ask, but there's quite a bit of information in there. Of good news is that I'm happy to report that all of Gilderland schools are in good standing. And I have Peter Rabat behind me. He's eagerly awaiting to, I think I jumped ahead on one item, but he's my lovely assistant, who's going to share with you a very exciting project that took place at Farnsworth this past year. Students from Farnsworth and their teachers had the opportunity to work with educators from the National Geographic Society and Google Earth as they teamed up to empower students to think about the world beyond their classrooms. Students from Mrs. Mullins' class and Mrs. McClure's class participated. Natalia Lemoine, who's the coordinator for instructional technology, brought this work to Gilderland, so I want to thank her. And students and teachers from the middle school have been highlighted on the National Geographic website. Their works emphasize global awareness in classrooms by exploring National Geographics, Out of Eden, WALK Project, and Google Earth. And a great video was created, and we'd like to share that with you this evening. So, Peter, if you would not mind.
This is the world I live in, and this is how I'm gonna impact it. Inspiring kids to do that is everything. When Lisa and I first took a look at all the materials from National Geographic, we thought that Paul's... This is the world I live in, and this is how I'm gonna impact it. And I think inspiring kids to do that is everything.
When Lisa and I first took a look at all the materials from National Geographic, we thought that Paul's journey was something that was really gonna hook the kids, because it's so interesting.
He's gonna take a twenty-seven thousand mile journey over the next ten years. He's gonna cross the paths that nomads, farmers, and traders would have taken.
We found his journey to be relatable. It was, he was going out into the world, he was meeting people, he was telling stories, and that was something that we thought kids could really latch on to. We really thought that it was important first to orientate them and kind of ground them in something familiar.
We showed them Google Earth, played around with some of the features.
Some went to China, some went to Rome, Italy. It was interesting, a lot of them wanted to look to where their ancestors came from.
I researched Hong Kong, China, and I got to see like an actual street view of it, which was really cool, because it didn't look like anything that I thought it would be.
Paul's Tale of Hec's Twenty-One Thousand Mile Odyssey is a decade-long experiment in slow journalism.
Then we went into actually looking at the maps of where he was traveling, looking at some video of him, and having them interpret what are some things that he might encounter that are obstacles.
He took his time to just walk around and really observe everything around him. He's really documenting how people are living, so it's kind of like you're along with him on the journey.
With the Google Earth, you could definitely see all the geographical features of where he was, and you could really just walk in his footsteps.
As a reading teacher, I find his journal entries just to be so eloquent and descriptive and such a great model of writing, that it's nice to be able to give kids access to that.
Now, they were going to be, as a group, working to create their own journey. The end result was, we wanted them to reflect on, why is it important, as residents of Gilderland, New York, to look outside of where we live?
When you ask questions and you observe, you construct that understanding from the ground up. And that's really what we're striving for. And I was excited to hear their takeaways at the end of class.
We get to learn about different people and the history and culture of different places. We can learn more about the planet we live on and the people we share it with.
I've been teaching for twelve, thirteen years, like I feel like I'm learning every day. And I feel like when you embrace the tools and just say to yourself, I might not be an expert in it, but that's okay, and learning alongside the kids, I think has really been the biggest lesson that I've learned.
I'm excited to keep using it. I want to go into a science classroom and into a sixth-grade classroom and a language arts classroom and apply some of the tools in all those different contexts. It's an opportunity for kids to take action. It's a way for them to say, these big things exist in the world, what is my part in that?
So there you go.
Great.
Thank you, of course, to Lisa McClure and Jamie Mullins, great work. So we just wanted to share that with you. And finally, some news from our social work department. Our, our, uh, social worker Catherine, Catherine, uh, excuse me, Catherine Rochetti and her social service canine companion Copeland recently traveled to New York City. They were invited by the Columbia School of Social Welfare and New York State School Social Work Association to present on our Gilderland Dog Program. And we do have some pictures for you. Unfortunately, the video that we wanted to attach did not upload to the portal. It was a very cute video of the dog barking fiercely at a passing fire truck. We'll get it to you then.
Thank you, Damian.
You're welcome.
Question if Damian has something to report on? The twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school report card, how will we, can we find it online? Or would you have access as to how we rank with other neighboring school districts?
Uh, we can get that for you.
Okay.
It's not going to be within this report card. This is specifically Gilderland's report.
Specifically for us, I read that. Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a question about, and I, I think, Marie, you mentioned that we're getting more service dogs?
Well, if you remember, our first, um, grant, we were entitled to five
Right.
new puppies.
Right.
And five of five will be arriving later this summer. And we recently had interviews to select the next owner of the puppy. So that will be underway. Deb Prata, who's a speech-language pathologist at the high school, will be the next primary handler of our fifth puppy from this grant. There is strong interest among Catherine Rochetti and others that we continue to expand the program.
That's what I was wondering, huh?
So that we have at least one dog in every building, perhaps two in the larger buildings. So, um, I don't know if I'm letting the cat or the dog out of the bag here, uh, but a gala is in the works for March.
And they did that before?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So we're making nice progress.
Nice. I think it's a wonderful program, having seen Copeland in the school. And even as a puppy, he's wonderful. And I'm sure the others are. He's just the one that I happen to have seen.
Yes.
I thank Catherine and whoever else has been involved in making that program as successful as it is.
Thank you. Next, we move to school business information. Neil?
Thanks, Christine. In accordance with board policy, I'm providing the annual report on cellular telephone. We currently have thirty-four phones. The total monthly charge for those thirty-four phones is eight hundred and nine dollars and sixty-six cents. It is one less phone than we had last year. Average cost per month, twenty-three dollars and eighty-one cents, which is slightly higher than the prior year average monthly cost. In terms of the criteria for the district cellular telephone plan, we looked at three basic criteria: users, plans, and cost effectiveness. In terms of users, we've had a limited number of cell phones that have been issued to district employees. The criteria used for issuing cell phones are job responsibilities that require frequent travel or time out of the office, or high levels of responsibility or decision-making authority, where communication access at all times is vital, or communication access is required in the event of an emergency. In terms of the plans, the district identifies the cellular phone plan best suited to the needs, requirements, and responsibilities of the job title or classification. Some users are provided cellular phones with push-to-talk, two-way radio communications to limit the use of cellphone minutes when frequent internal communication is the primary function. Plans are also identified to pool and share minutes in messaging and data among users to enhance cost effectiveness. In terms of cost effectiveness, the cellular phone plan utilized by the district has been competitively bid and negotiated by the New York State Office of General Services and/or the federal government. School districts are eligible to access these large contracts and receive the same rates and plan terms and conditions as other governmental agencies. The manner in which minutes are pooled and shared under these plans also provides a high degree of cost effectiveness by paying for the smallest number of minutes messaging and data that meets the needs of district staff.
Question? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next, again, in accordance with board policy, it's an annual listing of the donations received during the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. They're numerous. I'll just summarize them in terms of categories. So we received donations for musical equipment, instruments, excuse me, photography, equipment and resources, school backpacks and supplies, furniture, custodial equipment... and resources, school backpacks and supplies, furniture, custodial equipment, and a wheelchair. We also received some monetary donations, we received corporate donations for athletic field improvements, and a PTA donation for the Butterfly Station and Organic Garden.
Thank you again for all those donations. It's a good year.
Yes, it was a very good year. Next item on the agenda is Altamont classroom space needs and pre-K classroom lease. Due to increased enrollment, Altamont Elementary will be adding an additional primary or K2 section next year. The Building Cabinet met to discuss options for placement of classrooms for next year. Currently, the eight classrooms located in the 400 wing serve as the K2 primary wing. For 2016-17, there were two sections of kindergarten, three sections of first grade, two sections of second grade, and one section of inclusion students with special needs. For 2017-18, there will be two sections of kindergarten, three sections of first grade, three sections of second grade, and the inclusion class for a total of nine sections, which is one more section than the number of available classrooms in the wing. Building Cabinet explored several options, including isolating either one primary class or the inclusion class from the rest of the wing. This option was viewed as detrimental for the collaboration and sharing that occurs at the grade level, as well as limiting opportunities for inclusion. A second option considered was to move the two kindergarten classes back to the 300 wing. The 300 wing currently houses art, band, music, and the two leased pre-K classrooms. For that option to be viable, two classrooms among those dedicated for art, band, or music would need to relocate. Yeah, that option, the option considered was to move the art classroom to the 400 wing, band to a small room near the front office for lessons, and use the cafeteria stage for band rehearsal. Using the 400 wing classroom for art results in a smaller classroom, space, and a lesser number of sinks that will negatively impact the daily instruction. Band lessons near the main office area would be noisy and would require instruments to be transported back and forth from the stage two to three times a week for rehearsals. Programmatic concerns are increased transition time, reduced instructional time, and the likelihood for increased instrument damage. After considering all of these factors, the Building Cabinet's strong recommendation is to reclaim both leased pre-K classrooms for 2017-18. Not leasing the two classrooms would allow for the grade-level classes to remain together, provide continued opportunities for inclusion, allows the two kindergarten classes to return to the classroom spaces designed specifically for kindergarten, and permits art and band to remain in classrooms customized for the specialized instruction in those rooms. Victory Childcare is amenable to the district reclaiming both classrooms for 2017-18, but is concerned about the ability to reestablish a program in that building, will obligated to lease those spaces again in 2018-19. Looking ahead at projected enrollments for 2018-19, the district may have a need for one additional classroom section with three sections at the upper limit of the district's class-size guidelines. What is amenable to Victory Childcare is to relieve them of their obligation to lease classroom space at Altamont for 2018-19, but allow them the right to opt-in should leasing classroom space be mutually beneficial to both the pre-K provider and the district. This approach appears to provide the best resolution for adopting the recommendation of the Building Cabinet and to preserve opportunities for both the district and Victory Childcare to address potential needs in the 2018-19 school year.
I have a question and comment. Do you know how many students are currently getting services by Victory?
By Victory Childcare? It's a small number. I think it's less than around five, four or five. Peter, do you have?
Four or five kids?
I think it's four to six or seven kids, depending on the day of the week. There's a few, there's a couple that are part-time.
But you're just, that's just for Altamont, right? Or you're saying for all, the whole program?
Just Altamont.
Okay. Do you know what it is for the whole program?
I do not. I have to tell you.
I would just, I mean, I know I make the comment every time we talk about this, but I mean, being on the pre-K committee, I really thought that, and I talked to people on the committee also, that this was really going to be like a partnership and working together. And I hope Policy looks at this, because I agree, I agree with this. I think that, you know, students come first, so getting rid of the two classrooms. But if we do not help out Victory, our main concern when we brought Victory on is that they're not known to the district. And if we stand by and have this, not partnership, but they're a tenant, it's a business, I just think that we're going to continue to knock down the classrooms because of not being used, and eventually, you know, it's going to end that way. And I don't want it to end like a failure, I want them to be successful. And I think the only way they're going to be successful is if we help them, because the advertising's not there, people do not know about the program. And unless we reach out and provide some of that, it's just going to continue. We were at six, we're now going to be at three, and before this is done, I think we'll be close to zero.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to know how many are enrolled in the other venues at Farnsworth, and, you know, give us some feedback on that.
Okay. We can certainly do that.
There's two classrooms at the middle school, and there's one at Pine Bush. Are the two classrooms in middle school being used, or is one being used?
Just one of the two.
Right.
So we have one classroom.
Right, so it's really two classrooms.
Right, they're renting three classrooms, two at the middle school and one at Pine Bush. If we look at just those two buildings, so the plan next year would be to rent the same number of classrooms. Talking to Victory, she does have a need for one at Pine Bush, and she does have a need for one at the middle school. But right now, she's hoping to have, be able to have enough enrollment to open the second one, but right now, they can all fit within the one classroom.
What usually happens with a new venture, word of mouth, after they've been established for a year, and word of mouth usually does great things for them.
Yeah, I think I agree with Barbara. I mean, in terms of time, I know we're kind of like anxious, but I think she's probably taking it the right way, you know, go slow, get people on board, build a rapport within the district, and then, you know, let it grow. It may not be as fast as we like, but it might be to her liking that way, so that she's building a base, a strong base.
Or we may have misread the community, and there isn't a need for a lot of these, it seems hard to believe, but that's also a possibility.
At least the people I talked to do not know about it, do not know about Victory. And I know their website has gotten better, but in the beginning, you couldn't even find information about Gilderlin.
But I don't think we should take on that role. I think that's her responsibility, and she might be content with where they're at right now with a slower growth pattern rather than what we see is, you know, we want it to be bigger. So I'm really concerned that we take, that we not take that on. That's not our responsibility, that this may be coming from her for reasons we may not be, you know, privy to. Will the kids at Altamont be like relocated? Is that how they're going to work it, too?
Yes, yes. So she's looking at the middle school.
More centrally located, yeah.
Just about the number situation, at Pine Bush, there were four students, or four children, and then there's one during the summer, as I understand the numbers. My, my question is, can we ever get a compilation of, you know, what's going on with this situation financially? Because it was billed as a way to generate income for the district, not that it would be box office numbers, but that there would be some remuneration that's returned from the program. It just doesn't seem, I think, I think the middle school has some pretty good numbers for students, but it doesn't seem like the other locations do. So it should be a point for kind of a cost-effective analysis to see what's going on.
No, I think a couple of things has happened. Certainly, we have the rates, and they were competitively bid, as you know, so she did agree to rent six classrooms, and that was what she committed to in terms of the process for Victory Childcare. We need an extra classroom space at Pine Bush, as you know, so we made the agreement, there's a contractual provision that allows, if it's mutually beneficial to both the provider and the district, to alter the number of rooms on an annual basis. So we made that decision in the first year. Now we're in a situation where we've identified another need. Building Cabinet has at Altamont really looking to reclaim both classrooms. So again, based on the district's need, not just the provider asking to be let out of their lease, but looking at it from the point of view of the district needing the space. We talked to her about that need and her need, and it seems like we're in agreement on that, we can make that work with the proviso that I said about coming back and having to reestablish the program. She's still leasing two classrooms at Farnsworth, but only using one, so in terms of that commitment. So where we've made changes has really been a function of district need as opposed to letting the provider off the hook, so to speak, from their commitment.
But what about a cost-effective?
Well, this, this particular change right here, not having two classrooms at Altamont is $13,932 of revenue that we would otherwise have.
She pays by the classroom, not by the student. Yeah, we need the classrooms back, so we don't have any choice there.
So for next year, $6,966 a classroom is what she agreed to for the school year.
But when you get the classrooms, you have to have the children in there.
Right, but she's obligated to pay for the classrooms regardless, there's no, nothing tied to enrollment.
But if you only have four or one, that's a, that's a big use for a classroom.
She keeps it home.
That takes a lot of classroom away from them, the whole building.
Understood. But again, where we've identified that need to reclaim space, we, the district has.
I think, well, it was one classroom at Altamont and one classroom in middle school that has never been used, right? Is that the number?
Right.
Right, so she's paying for those two classrooms, not anymore next year, that one, but she's paying that $13,000 for those two classrooms, and she's never used it.
Right, so it ends up being more inefficient for her than for us, because if it's not using it, we're still getting paid the same.
And that gets back to my point, which is, we can continue to do it, but I think you're going to continue to drop the numbers down, so.
Teresa?
Neil, I don't recall what the commitment was for her with us for the length of time. Is it every year? Is it, because she said 18, 19.
Yeah, it's a three-year, we have a three-year agreement in terms of the rates and the six classrooms, and then it's optional on part of both parties to renew for an additional two years.
After that three?
Yes, so I would expect, given where we are, I doubt, unless there's a big change with Victory Childcare's numbers, that she may not want to continue under the same existing terms and conditions as the first three years.
Neil, do you recall the notice requirement, like when she would be required to let us know if she wants the option to renew?
I don't, it's in the agreement, but we both have that obligation.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay, thank you, Neil.
Okay. And then one final information item for this evening. As you are aware, the former Schenectady Army Depot project, the former burn pits in Army, old Army Depot, that project is coming to a close. The Army Corps of Engineers held a meeting here in this room a few months ago to allow the community to provide input into the process. One of the issues that the district raised is, okay, you're done with the project, you're packing up and you're moving on, what if there's still an issue afterwards? Is it fair to the Gilderlin taxpayers to have to deal with future potential costs? So I did get clarification last week that the Army Corps of Engineers has agreed to continue to provide resources and funding, subject to availability in the future should the district wish to construct buildings on land where higher soil gas concentrations have been detected.
And where is that property?
That is closer to the bus garage, the maintenance bus garage area.
So it's not, it's not school buildings as such?
It's not school buildings.
School-owned, but not inhabited by students?
Yes, and this would be, right now, where we have land but don't have buildings, and it really deals with vapor intrusion measures. So basically, would require some testing of the soils to determine the letter levels of gas that's rising up, and then what protection would you need to take to ensure the building is protected? So it's vapor intrusion measures are the ones that are talked about. How do you prevent the soil gases from coming up inside the building? What measures would you need to take? But they're saying they would agree to testing, to assisting with the design, and assisting the district in any way to make sure that that is mitigated. There's also the idea that these soil gas concentrations will fade over time, too, so. But while we have the opportunity to make sure that we have some resources still available, we have that, and it's part of the final determination report for the project, which we've received, so it's embedded within that report that they're willing to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Neil? Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
Next, we move on to superintendent information. Marie?
First, I'll start with just a brief update on our summer programs. Once again, we are participating in the Capital Region BOSI's Regional Summer School, which is held at Mahannason High School. This is for both our middle and our high school students, and it began today, July 5th, and will end on August 15th. Students registered back at the end of June, and if there's, people are interested in more information, it's certainly on our website. Two of our elementary buildings are also hosting summer school programs for students. Westmore Elementary School is hosting all of the BOSI summer school programs, and our own Gilderlin Elementary School is hosting all of our extended school year programs for our own students. And I understand we have an ENL summer school program at GES as well. So there's, two buildings are very, very busy. Many of our buildings are also home to summer camps run by the town of Gilderlin, and then, of course, you all know, in the week of August 6th to 11th, we will be hosting the Capital Region Makabi Games, for which we expect hundreds of athletes and thousands of spectators from around the country and the world. And that's really the tip of the iceberg of the kinds of things that are going on over the summer, but those are our programs involving students.
Marie, can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are any of our sports booster clubs setting up like hot dog stands or anything? That would be an ideal situation for them to make money, and, or do the games themselves do that?
Yeah, that's, they're renting the facilities, and they have their own, they bring in their own food vendors and so on and so forth, so. Good idea, though.
Always thinking about additional revenue, which is a perfect lead-in to my next item. I'm very pleased and thankful to report that we have received some additional aid in a legislative grant from Senator George Amador. He reached out to us and asked us what it was that we needed, and could I say right away what we needed? So we will be getting $19,000, and that money will go toward two projects. The first is to replicate the Sources of Strength program that we currently have at the high school, which is a suicide prevention program. We're going to replicate that at the middle school as well. And then with the balance of the funds, which should be about $7,000 or $8,000, we're going to purchase some alternative furniture, so pokey stools and some tall desks and chairs and a variety of pieces of furniture that can help our students engage in different kinds of ways. So I've already sent a letter of thanks to Senator Amador, and I happened to see him somewhere recently, I can't remember where, and I thanked him profusely for continuing to think of us.
Marie, where's the furniture going to go?
All across the district. So what we'll need to do is figure out, the amount we got is slightly less than what I asked for. So we're going to figure out the cost that we need to do the program well at Farnsworth, and then we'll take the balance of that and then look across the buildings to meet as many needs as we possibly can.
And in regards to the program, what does that, what does that entail? Like, how does that money get used?
For the Sources of Strength? Well, the program at the high school is, we started it this year, it's a program through the University of Rochester, and it's a strength-based peer and teacher support system, so that students think about how to solve problems based on their strengths rather than being kind of brought down by the things that trouble them. So it's very much a peer support group. It's been very successful at the high school. I see Amy Herolcheck nodding her head, and I know Anne-Marie McManus has played a big role in it, and the middle school has looked at it with interest, because obviously, our middle schoolers also begin to have more anxiety and worry about the pressures of life than we would think possible, but it's certainly there. So we'd like to have this through sixth through 12th grade.
Does it go, like, my question, I guess, is more geared towards, how does that money get used? Does it go towards a social worker? Does it go, because you said it was peer?
It's for training, for staff and for peer, to work with their peers, to coach, and so it's a, it's really a training model, and the team from Rochester will come here and do that training, and it's been excellent and very powerful.
Okay, thank you.
And then are those people who are trained able to train people going forward?
Yes, so there is a continuous process for keeping new people involved.
Okay.
My next item, I just want to thank everyone who participated in our graduation ceremony that was on June 24th. 410 seniors walked across the stage, so I want to give my thanks to Mr. Lutzick, the assistant principals, and his entire leadership team, as well as the class advisors, Mrs. Dayton and Mrs. Gallagher. Also want to thank the technical crew, and of course, the graduates themselves who contributed to this memorable event. So thanks to everyone who could be there. So thanks to everyone who could be there, and congratulations to our graduating seniors. My next item, I wanted to let you know that just today, we received the results of our exit survey from our budget vote and election back in May. We're going to be posting that probably tomorrow, but just a couple highlights to get you interested. In 2017, voter turnout was up from last year, actually is the highest since 2010. And then of two thousand six hundred and twenty-six voters, seven hundred and fifty-two completed our exit survey for a participation rate of twenty-nine percent, and that was our highest since 2012. The majority of our voters are town of Gilderland residents, about forty-nine percent have been district residents for more than twenty years. Has, has been the case since 2009, people without children currently attending Gilderland schools were the majority of survey participants, which is a bit counterintuitive. And as in previous years, a significant majority of survey respondents, eighty-four percent, said they typically vote yes on the budget, more than eight percent said they typically vote no, and eight percent said they have not voted in the past. And all of these percentages are consistent with the results from previous exit surveys. So it's interesting reading, and it'll be posted sometime during the day tomorrow. And then my next item comes by way of the Village of Altamat. The official opening of the museum in the streets, a joint venture between the Village of Altamat Archives and Museum and the Altamat Free Library, will be held at 4:00 PM on Wednesday, July 26th, 2017, at Orsini Park in Altamat. This is a by invitation only event, but I thought the board would be interested. As you'll recall, the Museum in the Streets project depicts various aspects of the village building's history in twenty-six locations throughout the village. There'll be a large panel installed in Orsini Park that will provide a stylized map of Altamat to help visitors get oriented to the village and to locate the lecterns at each of the twenty-six sites on the walking tour. The Museum in the Streets is designed as a bilingual historical and cultural walking tour, and the text of all panels is in both English and Spanish. So I will stop there, but we had a role in working with the village on this. Damian Singleton participated, and our social studies cabinet weighed in, and we're looking forward to having some wonderful field trips to the Village of Altamat to see this in action. And then last but not least, next week is the annual advocacy conference of the American Association of School Administrators in Washington, DC. The governing board of that group, to which I am an elected member, will be meeting on Monday. So I'm in the second year of my second term, so I only have one more year left to my term. There are six superintendents from New York State who sit on the governing board of A A S A. Immediately following the governance meeting, we have our annual advocacy, advocacy conference, and spend some time visiting Chuck Schumer and Kirsten Gillibrand's office, as well as Paul Tonkos. The big topic for this meeting, of course, is the federal budget and the impact on Medicaid for schools. If that were to go away, it would be a price tag of about three hundred thousand dollars for Gilderland. So at the conference, we spend about five hours getting briefed on the whole range of issues that are significant at the federal level, and then we walk up to the Capitol and meet with people and share stuff. So it's been a very productive conference in the past. A A S A played a key role in the reauthorization of what is now E S A, so we're proud of the work that we do there. And that's all I have.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Marie?
Well, thank you for going to that and being part of the leadership. I think that's great, and it serves us well.
Next, we move to board president information. There are three items this evening. The first one relates to the class ranking policy. The policy has been discussed recently at the policy committee, as well as at the last board meeting. We've also had students and others come and speak to it. The policy is presented here, the revised policy with the elimination of class ranking for review. It's scheduled for approval or a vote at the next meeting. Does anybody have anything they would like to say on this matter? Barbara?
If you go down to the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, I think we have to strike in the second sentence, we've, we've stricken rank, but rank in class. I think it should read, students will be notified of their GPA through a letter from the high school.
And what about, so the first class GPA in that paragraph didn't really make sense to me after reading the whole, we still want to use class GPA or GPA is calculated before?
Yeah, should just be GPA.
I mean, do we, do we need a policy? I mean, this policy was about class ranking.
Fair question.
Just eliminate the policy?
I know, but.
Is that something that was discussed at policy committee?
No, this was a.
Or, I mean, the elimination was that discussed at all or just?
This was suggested, this was suggested changes.
Yeah, that, but did you guys talk more generally about maybe just eliminating the policy altogether instead of revising it?
I think you have to have a policy of some sort. Either you do or you don't rank.
But we're not ranking.
But you have to establish a policy doing that. We are ranking now.
No, but if you cross it out and you don't have a class ranking policy, then, then you don't have it. Like, does Bethlehem?
Or can you just eliminate the policy?
Like, does Bethlehem and Iskuna have a student GPA and ranking policy, or did they cross out the, the class ranking policy?
Just eliminate the policy?
I guess that's a question to look at.
We don't know.
Because I think it's, it does seem odd to me, it's called student GPA and ranking, but the whole thing is not about ranking, it's about student GPA, so I was just confused.
Like, the definition of GPA, but do we need that?
I don't think you need the end ranking and the renaming.
Yeah, that's why I was, I was confused by the whole thing.
Well, the other thing, too, here, the way it's written, my understanding is that there are two GPAs that are established for the student, one is weighted and one is not weighted.
Right.
And that the unweighted one is used for stage purposes for graduation. Now, that isn't reflected here either, as presented.
Do we have a policy on grading? Is that reflected in the grading policy at all? The weighted, unweighted thing?
I'd have to look at that policy. I'm quite committed to memory, but we could take a look.
Yeah, because then I agree with Chris, I mean, we shouldn't have a policy on ranking if we're just eliminate the policy, as long as the grading piece stipule, you know, the definition of GPA and how it's arrived at is under some policy, but not here. Wouldn't be needed here, then.
There was a policy about weighted versus unweighted.
That's what I'm wondering.
I'm looking for grading, I think.
Right, there's a grading policy, so.
Yeah, there's a grading policy, so. We eliminate this one, we just eliminate class rank. Makes sense?
Talk about giving kids their ranking or giving kids their, their, I guess, their percentile in the, in the class for scholarship purposes or something like that. Was there, did I recall that correctly, that they, they were still going to be kept and provided on an individual basis?
If necessary.
If it was needed for some sort of scholarship application?
There's certain scholarship applications where you need classroom.
And then it would be calculated and sent in those situations? That was my understanding of it?
I'm sorry.
Do you think that should be part of the policy?
Somewhere. I would think that's part of grading. I would get rid of this and work on a grading policy and just, if you think that there's something missing.
Well, the grading policy I have here is quite extensive.
Yeah, we don't, this is just information, right? So we could look at it, but.
Is there some kind of, I'm sorry, is there some kind of policy about academic honors and sitting on stage? Because that, that wasn't, that was kind of a whole other discussion about whether highest honors students should continue to sit on stage, or everyone should just sit in the same area? I mean, I don't know if that's like a discussion for another day, but it kind of, it kind of goes along with the, with the, I guess you'd say.
Recognition.
Ranking of students, at least by designated honors, and, and singling out, and I guess they, one of the stated reasons for getting rid of ranking was because of tiny differences in GPA. So, I mean, theoretically, there could be a tiny difference between somebody on the stage and somebody on, not on the stage, based upon, I mean, I guess it's what, a ninety-five or something? Someone, someone falls like a tiny bit below or something, I mean, so I don't know if that, if that's a consideration as well, or if that is something that, it might be a discussion for another day.
Sounds like that's, that's more of a question of recognition at graduation, how is that done? Because if they have different, you know, tassels they wear, I think the ones on stage had a medal, you know, if that, if they have that, why not sit on, with everyone else? Because everyone's designated with some.
Right.
I would just love, I would just love.
Being on stages might not be necessary.
Might not be necessary.
To me, it makes sense that when we do that, we make a decision on that, and we also, I think, talk about the Board of Ed awards, in which I know in the middle school, how many, one-fourth or?
It's a lot.
Yeah. And really look at that and say, is this really, when everyone gets it, I mean, one-fourth gets it, you know, I think it's something we should look at, so.
Well, the same thing, I think, happened with the high school thing, too. We had so many on stage, I mean, it's getting to be.
Right. I don't have to repeat my joke, but yes. Like, you know, after a while, I mean, you know.
But that, yeah, I think that has to do with grading and recognition at, at graduation.
But I wonder if there's something we could do differently than just say this ninety-five or above, but maybe put another piece of it of, you know, how you help others, how you work, you know, do some other criteria, so you limit the number of people, instead of being four hundred.
Well, I think that depends on us, if we're talking about the Board of Ed awards, then it's our criteria.
I really think, I would love for us to talk about that and reexamine it and see if there's a different way, a different way we want to approach it, because obviously just saying ninety-five or above.
Not going to work.
Having four hundred ki, I don't know, what was it, how many kids at the middle school?
It was over four hundred, yeah.
Over four hundred kids, I mean, you know, after a while.
So with regard to this specific policy, then how are we moving forward?
What I would say, you know, we can vote on eliminating class rank for next year at the next meeting.
And then think about whether we need this or not?
Exactly, and if you're going to, we'll look at the grading policy to see if the GPA fits better in there, it doesn't.
I'm not finding it quickly. It talks about the difference between weighted and unweighted and what they're.
Right, I know that part.
But maybe this should be, should be in that versus in, in something like this.
Right, not in a ranking.
Right, so we don't need that policy, the ranking policy at all.
Right.
Right, but the other thing about the kids sitting on stage or whatever, remember, this came up through the building cabinet at the high school. So I personally don't want to say, well, we're going to change graduation for you guys.
No, we shouldn't.
You know, the building cabinet, maybe we can ask them if they would consider, you know, looking at those types of things, but I'd rather see it coming from them than.
I was talking more about the Board of Ed awards, which I think would come from us, right?
Right, right.
All right, so then at the next meeting, we'll plan to vote on whether to eliminate the class rank or not, and the policy committee will continue to revise those policies accordingly?
Right.
And will we bring to the high school our concerns?
I'll share, we've actually.
I know, you began the conversation already.
So I will share with Tom.
Good.
That it's a bigger conversation.
Bigger conversation, okay.
And then just real quick, between now and the next meeting, after a while, you know, you know who the kids are probably going to be like the top ten class rank would be left alone? I would just want to know, like, do those students have an objection if we get rid of it for next year? That's my only concern about, we don't have to do it tonight, because we have the next meeting, but, you know, changing the, the game in the middle, you know, the end here, you know, if some students are.
They don't know.
What was I?
They don't know the class rank.
People know where they're one through five, you know, they're all.
Not really.
They don't know.
Well, I know we don't officially tell them.
How would they know then?
Well, I think one of our students talked about how students share grades among one another.
Well, yeah, but about tests and stuff, but we don't have officially averaged grades out.
I bet you people know, like unofficially, who, well, I'm just asking.
Well, they're very smart, that's for sure, so I'm sure they can figure it out.
But we have two of the kids here, if they feel comfortable answering that question.
Do either of you, Teresa or Timo, want to come back up, or Jonah, want to come back up to the mic and answer, do, would, would the top one through ten know? Is that feasible, or do you think it's more of a, kind of, a guess?
I think students probably know if they're ranked somewhere near the top ten percent, but we really have no way of knowing officially where we are at all.
So Jonah, when you did your survey, and you, and for those students, what was their reaction of, that's my only concern about changing it now.
Yeah, there was, um, there was no way to tell the difference between, you know, where someone stood in the survey. A large majority of students so said they, and I believe this was in the PowerPoint, that they would feel more comfortable choosing harder classes. That was all the information that we got, though, that a majority of students, not what the makeup of that was.
I think that, that would be an interesting point, if we can get that information. Because I just, I, that's the only thing I feel bad about this, is that if kids are competing, then some people do see it important to be number one or two, and then all of a sudden we say, all right, we're not, no longer doing it, so therefore, that's it.
I think.
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, like, I figured out when I was, like, in ninth grade, what my, like, approximate rank was, when I was applying for a club, it's like a long story, but I would qualify to be in the top, like, five percent of a class. So I'm, and like, class rank would technically benefit me, but it's like not about, like, the eight people that are benefiting from class rank, it's about the, like, three hundred and whatever, three hundred and ninety-two other people that are not benefiting from class rank, and it's not always about us, like, we can get our own intrinsic affirmation about the fact that we've worked really hard and gotten certain grades, but if we're, if so many other people are going to be at a detriment for this, then we should have known.
That's a good point.
Excellent point.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here again tonight. Are there any other comments on this topic? Kathy?
Well, I just wanted, my son is in California, and he, he read the Altamat Enterprise article before I did about class rank, and his comment was, he wished that Gilderland had never ranked. And he was a high, he had a high rank in his class, but he just, he said, I mean, it kind of surprised me a little bit, but he just said he wished that they'd never ranked.
Thank you. Anyone else? So be prepared for a vote at the next meeting.
To remove the whole policy.
Yes. Eliminate that policy.
To remove ranking.
To eliminate ranking, and then I think policy would continue to work on.
But, but number forty-seven, forty-one would no longer be in our.
Right.
And we would.
But our concerns in the grading policy.
In the grading policy, okay.
The next item is the Board of Education Member Handbook. There's several committees that have been working on revising an operating procedure handbook for board members. The handbook is included for review and comments, additions and edits. Has everybody had the opportunity to at least take a first look at it? Does anybody have any initial, I mean, I know we've been looking at this and working on it for a while, so not really initial, but does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments on it today? Okay.
It, it might be a good idea, over the course of the year, to just take, Linda did a great job of, you know, printing it out and putting it into sections, is maybe every once in a while, when the agenda's not too full, put one section in for the following meeting, we take a, just a quick look at it, make sure, just, you know, I mean, we're relying on Tim to give us feedback, but also, we need to just make sure it's saying what we intended it to say.
I think that's an important point, to see if Tim, you know, over the course, if he, Teresa and others, you know, find it helpful.
Yeah, if we space it out and kind of talk about it throughout the year, it might be more helpful than just waiting till the end and it's just overwhelming.
Yeah, sure. Tim, did you have any initial reaction to this handbook, or still taking a look at it?
Yeah, I've, I've looked it over quite a bit. It's, it's very user-friendly, but I guess I'm confused, is it in effect already, or is it going to be?
It's something we've been working on, I think at the next meeting, we'll probably vote on it.
Okay, because I thought you heard, I thought I heard it was, had been updated or it was up for review, so is it in practice or not? Or has it been in practice?
See, what happened was, we worked with a NISBA guy, they have their own policies, and during the course of, course of this past year, each committee took a section of that and made it Gilderland-friendly, put it more to us. And so what it reflects now is what we hope is a Gilderland-type of a handbook for a new board member for us, and that's why you're the first to kind of look at it from those eyes. So it's not quote officially ours, we're kind of testing it out in a draft form this year and kind of modifying it, changing it along the course of this year. So if you see anything in it that you say, oh. So if you see anything in it that you say, oh, this doesn't make sense to us, it would be helpful for us to know it as we go along. And then hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a revised draft, and then say, next year, accept the more permanent version.
Yep. Okay.
But I think, like you mentioned today, though, it's important we follow this, so...
Absolutely.
So that was good that you brought that thing today.
Any other questions or comments on the handbook? Okay, and the last information I have relates to the, a NISBA resolution for submission. Information was recently emailed by NISBA to each board member regarding submitting resolutions and proposed bylaw amendments for consideration by the voting delegates at the annual business meeting in the fall. The annual process sets NISBA's advocacy efforts through the, through the proposal of new position, new positions and the continuation or discontinuation of those set to expire. Only boards of education that are members of NISBA and NISBA's Board of Directors may submit resolutions for consideration. Proposed resolutions, once adopted, may direct NISBA to advocate either for or against a wide variety of legislative and regulatory issues at both the state and federal levels. Um, and this year, Gilderlin is interested in submitting a resolution, which Barbara has advocated for. Barbara, do you want to speak to this?
Yes, I think you all have it up on your screen, and Judy and I, what was it, about a week or so ago, went to a meeting that NISBA sponsored, and we're fortunate enough to run into Jay Rorona, who's sort of our legal guru, and there's one other slight change that I want to, uh, put in, that was suggested that I failed to put in here. A resolve that NISBA support any and all proposed, put the word proposed, changes to state law regulations and state policies, if you would, when you're thinking about it. Um, that was just a suggestion from people that were there, and I didn't type it in. But it's, it will go, if, if we pass this, as I suspect we will, uh, it will then go to the Resolutions Committee, they will either determine whether they will support it, uh, you know, to the convention, or if it will go into the, you know, unsupported pile. So, um, I think Schenectady, he said that they would go along with this and co-sponsor it with us, uh, if, you know, we, we sponsor it.
I, I know that you, you speak when you go to the meeting, but when they're considering it, do you get to speak on behalf, or do they vote?
No, they want one person from either administration or ourselves available on the twenty-fourth, because they may choose to wordsmith it, or just say, it's a crazy idea, or whatever.
Right.
So one of us has to be available on the twenty-fourth.
So you actually go, go there?
No.
Oh, they call, oh, by telephone, okay.
By telephone, yep.
And are you that person, or?
Uh, could either be me, Maria, or whatever we work out.
It's an interesting process.
And it, it's important to understand with this, it took me a while to see, this doesn't mean it becomes anything in New York State, it just means that NISBA will advocate for it, um, and it, it's on their radar, so. It's the first step, and it's the way you get things done.
Yep.
Well, it's interesting, too, when you go to these, these gatherings, um, you sort of pick up what's happening in other school districts, and apparently, one of the big issues in Bethlehem this last time round, uh, for the election, was are you for or against these time changes, and the two of the three that were elected were supportive of what we're doing here. And again, it's, it's a thing that's becoming more and more nationally recognized, and again, we're here for the kids. It's, we know what the research says.
Thank you, Barbara, for taking the lead on this.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on this? Okay, we will move on to action items.
You have to, yeah, you have to pass this.
We have to pass it.
Oh.
We have to suspend the rules.
What was the information last time?
We didn't have, um, the resolution, though, last time.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't have a...
So we could just suspend the rules.
We got the wording last time, so we have to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend the rules, to pass the resolution. Chris, second, Barbara, all those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is eight-zero. Now we need a motion to approve the resolution. May I have a motion? Gloria, second, Barbara, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is eight-zero. Thank you again, Barbara. Now we can move on to action items. Curriculum and instruction, Damian?
Uh, we have a textbook that was shared for, uh, review at the last board meeting for your information, and the textbook is The Martian by Andy Weir, for using grade eight language arts.
And this has been modified somewhat for eighth graders?
Yes.
Yes, language and things like that, yeah. I just want to make sure that people are aware of it. There was some things that were pretty tough in there.
It's more...
May I have a motion to approve the textbook? Judy, second, Kathy, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Zero. Now we move on to school business management action, Neil?
First item this evening are the approval of a number of service agreements for the provision of programs and services for students with disabilities for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. I'll list out the vendors that we're dealing with here. CDB Connections, the Center for Disability Services, the Charlton School, Northeast Associates in Rehabilitation, Upstate Cerebral Palsy, Vanderheiden, Visual Eyes, and Wildwood School.
Okay, um, if there's no objection, may I have a motion to approve all of the service agreements together? Barbara, second, Teresa, are there any questions or comments? Judy?
I just have one, the, it's a Vanderheiden agreement for the summer of this year, so that's already taking place.
They said they started their programming yet?
Oh, July tenth, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Pass is eight-zero.
Uh, next is the legal services agreement, and this is the renewal of an agreement with Gervin and Flaso to provide special education legal services. There's no change in the service, in the level of services, and there is also no increase in fees, and we're very happy with the services that we're receiving through the attorneys that are assigned to the school district.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the legal services agreement? Judy, second. Gloria? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Did anybody have any questions on that?
I actually just have one. Um, how, why do we need a separate agreement for legal services for special ed?
Uh, it's a specialty area of law, is basically what it is, so...
Oh, okay.
Um, there's education law, and then incorporated in the provision of special education services, there's a lot of federal law beyond New York State law, um, so it's not just uniquely education law that you're dealing with at that point in time.
Thank you. Were there any other questions about that one? Okay. Neil?
Okay, next is an internship agreement with the Massachusetts College of Liberal Arts, and this is for a student wishing to conduct an administrative internship with music supervisor Lori Hirschenhardt.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Kathy, second. Gloria? Any questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is eight-zero.
Uh, next is a bid award for contracted transportation services, and this is for services to transport students to the Langin Center for Disabilities and Parsons Child and Family Services during this summer. We asked eight vendors to solicit bids, and only one responded, and that was Durham School Services LP, so we're recommending a word to that vendor.
May I have a motion to approve the transportation bid award? Judy, second. Kathy, any questions on this one? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Pass is eight-zero.
And finally, this evening, we have several more donations. We started the meeting, beginning the meeting with donations, will end it tonight as well. Uh, we received a trombone from Karen McIver, a trombone from James Angus, and a saxophone mouthpiece and neck strap, tuba mouthpiece, and two clarinet mouthpieces from Roger Kingsland.
May I have a motion to accept the donation? Teresa, second, Barbara, any questions or comments, other than thank you for the very generous donation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Pass is eight-zero. Now we will move down to Board President action items. And the first item here is establishment of voter registration dates and locations for two thousand eighteen. This is a resolution that will need approval. I'll read it. Whereas the Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education is required to set by resolution the time and location of personal voter registration dates to be held not more than fourteen days, nor less than five days before the annual vote and election. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education pursuant to applicable law establishes May third, May seventh, and May eighth, two thousand eighteen, from eight-thirty AM until two-thirty PM at the following locations. Altamont Elementary School, Gilderlin Elementary School, Lynwood Elementary School, Westmere Elementary School, and Pine Bush Elementary School for personal registration for said annual vote and election. Additionally, any person otherwise entitled to vote at said annual vote and election may register at the Gilderlin Central School District Office at Eight School Road, Gilderlin Center, New York, on May third, May seventh, and May eighth, two thousand eighteen, between the hours of eight-thirty AM and four-thirty PM. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Second, Chris, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is eight-zero. We have one more action item, and this relates to the NISBA Area Seven Director nomination. NISBA is in the process of accepting nominations for areas one, three, five, seven, nine, and eleven. Nominations are due to NISBA by July thirty-first. The directors are nominated by the member school boards of their designated geographic area and elected by ballot. The Area Seven Director represents school districts in Albany, Columbia, Rensselaer, Saratoga, Schenectady, Warren, and Washington Counties. The NISBA Board of Directors consists of the association's president, two vice presidents, the treasurer, and the immediate past president, one director from each of the association's thirteen geographic areas, and a representative from the Conference of Big Five school districts. The duties of the Board of Directors include promoting the interest of education throughout the state, deciding general policies of the association, appointing the executive director, and adopting the association's annual budget. It is recommended that the Board make the following nomination to submit to NISBA by ju-, by the July thirty-first deadline. Be it resolved that the Gilderlin Central School District Board of Education submit the nomination of Kathryn Lewis as NISBA Area Seven Director for a two-year term, beginning on January first, two thousand eighteen, and expiring on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. May I have a motion to approve the nomination? Judy, second. Gloria, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that, um, Kathy has been the, uh, president of the CAPSBA, and has been involved in a lot of activities, and is very competent and very, uh, active, and would be an excellent representative for us. I, I, I think she would do a very good job, and I am pleased that we are nominating her. Or, if we do want.
I agree, she's, she's one of the hardest workers in that group.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Pass is eight-zero. Thank you. Now we move on to Board Committee reports, and these reports will relate to the meetings between June thirteenth and now, and Audit Committee, Neil?
Yes, the Audit Committee met and discussed comparative pay rates for the title of claims auditor. The committee recommended to take a two-year approach to raising the pay rate for that job title to be comparable to other area school districts, and the committee also agreed to review the additional duties requested of the position beyond claims auditing, and maybe making some adjustment to those during the next school year.
Thank you, Neil. Did any of the other committees meet? Okay. We will now move on to public comment number two. Linda, did anybody sign up? Okay. And now we move to Board Issues, Ideas, and Sharing. Does anybody have anything they'd like to? Tim?
Yes. Um, so I asked for some time, um, and, uh, I guess I'll start out with this handbook for Better School Board Operating Procedures, and on page twenty-one, I happen to run across this item, number four. "In order to preserve the integrity and credibility of the school district as a whole, members shall not speak negatively, for example, personal attacks or character assassination, about another member, superintendent, or staff." When I read that, I thought this was something that's already been in fact for years, so I didn't realize this was a brand-new thing. But, um, if you go back, I want to use it as a way to go back to the May twenty-third board meeting, where there was an awful lot of talk about electioneering and, uh, charges made toward me, uh, which would have definitely fallen, fallen under this, uh, line of personal attacks. Um, I thought it was pretty bad form, and I thought there was a lot of, you know, one of my campaign themes was that, uh, if you're going to discuss things, and if you're going to put things out, especially to the public, you have to have all the information. I think that's very important, to have all the information. I had a student, uh, one of my second graders came up to me very early one morning, about seven forty-five, and he, uh, put his hand in my face with his middle finger up. And I was kind of taken aback, and I thought, well, gee, what do we have here? This is an interesting way to start the day. But before reacting, he, uh, followed up with Mr. Haran, I have a cut on my finger. You needed more information, you needed all the information before you can make a good decision. We went to get a Band-Aid, instead of a trip to the principal's office, maybe. So, information is important, and, uh, a full context of the information is important. So, uh, for ten minutes, there were a lot of, uh, charges thrown out at that May twenty-third meeting. I was called a cheater, I was called somebody who thinks that are above the rules, uh, it was said that I should be disqualified, uh, which means I wouldn't be sitting here today. Prior to that, it was said I should have been disqualified even as a candidate, uh, for running for school board. So, a lot of this talk is, uh, I feel very unnecessary, and it kind of poisons the well of, uh, the body politic and what we're all about in our community, and, and especially as representatives. And that's something I, I felt strongly about, and, and one of the reasons why I wanted to, uh, run for the board in the first place. The charges of electioneering came down to three different areas, and, uh, one was a letter from the GTA, and, and I would thank, uh, Mrs. Barber for pointing out that I didn't write the letter, I didn't distribute the letter, I had nothing to do with the letter, it was a GTA memo, and any problems or issues with that have been addressed by the GTA president and by the NICE labor relations specialist. But again, it didn't involve me, it was a letter of support, and I thanked the people for supporting me. But they took care of that issue, so that really didn't, shouldn't have been brought up on my, anything to do with me. Then there was a picture, uh, called Ties for Tim. Uh, this was taken on Election Day, and ended up in the Altamont Enterprise, um, it was a social media picture. Uh, again, it was a show of support, uh, by colleagues at Pine Bush, uh, it was a nice picture. Picture was taken by the principal of the school. Again, I had nothing to do with the picture. The principal took the picture, other people, uh, did what they did with the picture, um, I did nothing with the picture. I wasn't in the picture, I wasn't near the picture. So for that to get lumped in again, seems like bad form. And I, and I feel bad for the staff members that were in the picture, because they were just showing their support, there wasn't any attempt to influence a vote or anything like that. It was just, uh, a nice gesture, again, a show of support for me, I thanked them for that, I appreciate that. It was not electioneering at all. Earlier that day, uh, on Election Day, when my wife showed up for work at, uh, Gilderlin Elementary School, she was, uh, immediately confronted by the principal there with whether I was in school or not that day. And I shouldn't be in school that day, I should take a sick day. I should be out of the building because it would look like electioneering. Um, I, I found this to be very troubling. Uh, if, if you have a question like that, call me, come see me, but you don't have to bother my wife. She was showing up for a day of work and just trying to go teach her third graders that day, so. I don't know what's going on, but that was not appropriate. That should not have been happening. Um, and then there was a talk of a PTA meeting and, and I think that's where I'll spend most of my time because I think there's a ton of misinformation out on this PTA meeting and, and allegations of a so-called speech. Um, if you look at the agenda from that PTA meeting and, uh, Mr. McManus was there and the superintendent was there, I was clearly introduced as a teacher representative. Um, that was my capacity for being there. I was subbing for another teacher who was at a different event that night. I was asked to do it, I said, sure, I'll do it. Uh, so I was there on business. Um, I was not there to give speeches, I was not there, uh, to do anything other than take notes and report back to the person who was the usual representative. Um, so to hear this talk of how there was some sort of big calculated effort on my part to be there to, uh, give speeches and carry on, it's just wrong. Um, I was there to do a job, I was introduced as the teacher representative for that meeting. Um, everybody clearly understood that. There's, there's a suggestion, and I've seen it in the minutes from that meeting on the twenty-third, I think it was of May, there's a suggestion that I was, um, that I didn't say anything until Mr. McManus and the superintendent left and that this was some, that I was aware, this shows I was aware of doing something wrong. That is total fabrication. Um, it's like the fake news we hear about these days. Uh, and you can't get disappointed over something that didn't happen. So, you know, I call that a kind of bullying innuendo when you, when you throw out things like that and there's just no support for it. I was asked, as a representative there, I was asked two questions at the meeting. I answered two questions. That's it. Um, so, this is all the information. Um, before people are labeled cheaters or thinking they're above the rules or all of these other kind of, uh, you know, nasty personal attacks, people should have all the information and, and be fair. I thanked Mr. McManus, he made comments at that meeting, he was fair. Mrs. Barber made comments, she was fair. Um, that's what I'll be looking for, uh, as, uh, we begin today. And, um, I'm excited about being a board member, I'm looking forward to it. Um, I'll be, I'll be, uh, memorizing the handbook so I can give back very good feedback on it. Um, but, uh, I'm here to work and I'm, I was elected fair and square, uh, to represent the public and I'm actually pretty proud of that and I, I take it very seriously and, um, you know, I'm ready to go. So, uh, thanks for the time and for listening.
Yep. Thank you Tim for, uh, giving us that additional information and I, I do want to say on behalf of the Board, welcome and the nine of us are a team and I think we're all looking forward to having a good year and, and working with you and working with each other. So I appreciate you taking the time to say this and I hope we can have a great year together. Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Barbara?
Just wondering, um, the people that mentioned the playground supervision, could we get some feedback as to all the playgrounds in the district? How many teachers are out during recess time? Well, actually, you probably know already, you know, how many are out there? Do we have aides that help supervise the playgrounds? Um, and we do have money eventually coming from the state. I guess we haven't heard anything about that one yet, but, um, you know, will there be additional cameras, do you think?
Yes, that's the plan.
So those blind areas that they were talking about will be covered with, with cameras?
Um, I'd have to look at the exact locations of where they're planned for, I don't know if they align with all the blind areas that were presented tonight, but.
But just from, from, you know, my personal standpoint, you know, what happens when the kids are out in the playground? I mean, do we have, obviously we already have a teacher out there that comes out with the class, but are there any additional eyes? I mean, when you have fifteen little kids or thirty, sometimes two or three classes going out, you know, how much supervision is there and do we need more? So maybe by the next meeting, we can just, just get a general picture of what actually happens on the playground? Would that work?
Possible. It is, but I want to, um, let you know that about three weeks or a month ago, we had a meeting in the district office with our insurance carrier, with Tim Murphy from our Safety Service through the BOSIs, Cliff Noonie, uh, Neil was there, I was there, really to look comprehensively at playground safety, including, uh, the equipment itself, the signage, supervision, um, and really to look comprehensively across the district. So we can get you the immediate data, but this is now a, a main topic for our work. Uh, we'll be adding this as a regular item on our monthly, um, we have a district-wide safety committee. Uh, the, the mom who spoke tonight has volunteered to serve on our committee and to be helpful in that regard, so this is a very high priority. So we can share what is, but you, I just want to be clear that we're looking at making it more than what currently is.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so now we need a motion to go into Executive Section to discuss matters pertaining to potential litigation. Kathy, second. Chris? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes eight zero. Thank you.